Stalking, following, I mean this is a one mile radius city. I go by City Hall several times. I'm not stalking anyone, I'm not following anyone.
So we have proof that he was not or was?
I don't think there's proof for either, yeah. And that's just my opinion, I don't think it's...
What are the qualifications for mayor? Requirements?
Nope.
No, it's left of position.
And what does the mayor do?
I don't know, it's all on the chart. Duties of the mayor.
Do you know what age she can find it faster?
I'm okay.
Yeah, I didn't bring my chart, it's right in.
Duty of the mayor isn't him. Acting mayor's...
Oh, right here, sorry.
Page three, should be on the bottom of the table.
Did you find it? I have it right here.
Yeah.
Okay, Article, it's on page four, Article six, Mayor, Section 6.1. Duties as to counsel, the mayor shall preside at all meetings of the council, shall appoint council committees except as otherwise provided herein, and shall be ex officio a member of each committee without a vote. He shall be a member of the council for all purposes. I mean, it goes on, it's all Section 6 here on page four and five.
I'm honestly not sure how I feel, Gerald, just because there has been so much negativity around you. And I'm not saying that's just your fault, I'm just saying that's the way it is. And is that what we want for the city?
We've already got it for the city, I mean, the negativity is...
Okay, then we'll add to it?
No, not at all.
Did you hear everybody out here?
Of course, because they've been fed a lot of stuff, you know, for the past few months, which some of it could be true, some of it could not be, I mean. But I know we ran out of time because nothing was done in the last thirty days.
Because we didn't discuss it.
Nope, it was never brought up for a motion to discuss, we brought it up.
But now we're out of time.
Technically, no, you have thirty days.
So we have a couple more days left.
You have very...
Yeah, nine days.
Well, you have to pull a special meeting through soon. Anybody else got any discussions with the motion on the floor?
I, no, I just don't think it would benefit the city, that, that's all.
I just know the commitment and dedication that even, I mean, take the negativity aside, the commitment and dedication he has had.
I've seen that, yes.
It's been overwhelming, and the commitment to be a mayor. I don't know that any else here at least would have that time or effort to put into that position.
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
There it is.
There what is?
Councilman Ford?
No.
Councilwoman LaPorte?
Yes.
Oh, Christ.
Councilwoman Corrigan?
Yes.
Do we have, I don't, I'm not sure on procedure, since this is regarding Gerald, does he receive a vote?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, it's just for me.
But it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Councilwoman Fisher?
No.
Since he hasn't liked to vote for himself?
Not the way you're...
I'm not either. I'm just asking council.
And you call him, you still have to have his either standing here or no.
Councilman Gibson?
Motion carries.
Gee, acceptance of the resignation of our clerk, Yvonne Rodrick.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation.
I'll support.
So a motion and to support to accept the resignation of our clerk, Yvonne Rodrick, roll call vote?
Discussion.
Oh, discussion, I always forget that part. Is there any discussion?
Joan, did you get the, like, keys and everything?
Yes, they did.
Okay. Roll call, Councilwoman LaPorte?
Yes.
Councilman Saha?
Yes.
Councilman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Corrigan?
Yes.
Mayor Proton?
Yes.
Moving on.
I just want to add, how we're going to fill that position.
That's I, that...
That's I, vacant position.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Corrigan, added.
Yep, H, why I'm, you're asking why Yvonne was on administrative leave?
Yeah, instead of just finishing up the two weeks.
It is recommended practice when someone is in the cash drawer, has the ability for vote to register, all of that, for sensitive information, to put them on administrative leave. That's what was done. So...
And I, the vacant position. We need to discuss how to handle this position, I would recommend, oh, sorry.
No, I just would like to say that you probably shouldn't make this a dual purpose, both for the clerk and for the vacant seat on council. Then you should have two postings.
Correct, yes.
Correct, okay.
Do you want to post on, like, through Pin County Journal or...
I would, I would say for...
Through MML for Yvonne's position?
You can get a free listing on MML. Awesome.
MML and, indeed, I would post for the clerk's position, and for the council seat, I would say the Journal, because it has to be a person that lives in the city.
In the city, yes.
Do you have a prepared job description for the clerk at this point?
I would have to look, I believe there was, but I haven't seen it in a while.
And what would we be asking for, just a letter of intent for the positions? Or applications, resumes?
I would have to say application on resumes.
I'm talking for all the two positions, not just the clerk, but...
For the clerk, I would say resume, and for the position of council, an application.
A letter of intent.
I think would be easier. Either way.
We already have a letter of intent.
Yeah, I would agree with council, a letter, a letter of intent, just a letter.
We already have a letter of intent for the vacant seat from Chris.
If you find that job description, and if there is one, we'll have to print one. And MML does have those job descriptions hand handed.
Yes, they do, yeah. So can I have a motion and support for that?
Oh, for the postings?
Mm-hmm. I'll make a motion to open for both job positions.
For the clerk and...
For the clerk and the council, council member.
Anyone want to support?
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and support to post for the vacant council seat and for the city clerk's position. Will I roll call vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Public comment.
One other point, with the vacancy of, resignation of Mayor Brown, is he still on the bank accounts as far as the secret authority that could change and bring in...
So at this point, we did contact the banks after the September 30th meeting. I need to wait until today, when those minutes were approved, to take that to the bank, but I will tell you right now that it will be delayed again because it will have to wait until next month, as far as Yvonne, for those minutes to be approved again, so that I can have her. So, yes, one will come off, but we will still be in limbo. As of right now, only myself and Mayor Proton can sign.
I just want to make sure you got another secret authority.
Yep, we took that to the bank, or, buy them right.
All right, thank you.
Public comment, okay, can I speak now? One at a time, you can come up and state your name, please.
Okay. My...
An address.
An address. Oh, an address. But anyway, and you get...
My name is Hope.
You get five minutes and come up.
Oh, I don't know, five minutes ain't enough. One thing, how long have you been here?
What's your name, man, sorry?
I'm sorry, my name's Hope. How long have you been City Mayor? Two years. Okay, so you're going back four years, and you're trying to accuse her of all these problems with the money. Don't add up there, does it? So, don't be accusing her of something that she's not doing apparently, and if you're unhappy with her work, then fire her ass. Don't just bring her ass, fire her. If you think there's a problem, you're in her. And if you're out, just fucking quit. Now, how many hats are you wearing? A lot. Shame on all of you then, for giving her that many hats, and trying to make her fit, all of that in one day. There's only eight hours in a day, so she has to stay late just to do all of these jobs that you expect of her, and then you're not even satisfied with it? Wow, that's all I got to say. Why don't you guys put yourself in her shoes and do her job, and then see what she's under? Because to me, it sounds like that you all are out for her, especially you. Because that's why you work on her, on her, on her. So you don't like her? Fine. But is she doing anything wrong? Apparently, this started two years before she even had a job. Right? No, you just said forty years ago. And she's only been in this position two?
That's when the deficit started.
Yeah.
Last year was the...
But you were saying that, what's going on? Well, apparently, it started way back. Not now. So don't be accusing her of something she's not doing. I guess that's all I got to say. Oh, and then about the email thing, I'm sorry, she's supposed to control that? She told us she didn't have the passwords. So if she don't have the passwords, how can she take it over? So you're going to reprimand her for something that she didn't even have access to? I'm sorry, but don't reprimand someone that don't have the access to it. It's not her fault, but, okay, you're completely... Okay. I'd say fuck you, that's what I'd say.
Yeah, we can't be using profanity like that in chambers, please.
Well, I apologize for slaying my friend. Um, yes, Mike.
Officer Viviano, can you escort her out of the building, please?
Oh, he don't have it.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Duranchek, I'm Bay County Commissioner, and reside at 710 Bermuda Street in the city of Pin County. I just got a couple of things, the lady from Region 7 was here, as you heard, you know, if it wasn't for their six million dollars that they get through state and federal funds, we would have no Meals on Wheels, and a lot of support for our senior citizens that are locked in their homes, but still being able to stay in their homes and not go into a facility. Just last week, they came, they phoned, they ended up with ten thousand dollars extra, but we had two days to get a grant application into them. We have a great grant writer in Bay County. They applied, we received a ten thousand dollar check at my last board meeting, which is going to go for new cooking equipment. We're over a thousand meals a day that we're cooking, for Meals on Wheels. In our sites, fifteen hundred, we did one day last week, they did fif, for special events, we did fifteen hundred meals, so that's really something. Brownfield cleanup, I have, as soon as you guys kind of get... As soon as you guys get everything kind of squared away, I have a lady's name who can help you. She has put together three brownfield cleanups in Bay City, some of them close to a million dollars, zero cost to the city of Bay City. You've got some sites here, I checked with Councilman Saha today, and it appears that you're already set up with a brownfield, which is nice. But, you know, this is information I can share with you, but you guys need to get your act together a little bit. I'm not sure about other, about here, but other municipalities. Clerk treasurer is one job, and then the city manager or something, I don't know if that's legal or whatever for cities, but I know townships and all that, it's pretty common. So you might want to see if you know it, and then you end up with that separation, as Mr. Saha was saying. Along with Officer Viviano, he attended last week's meeting with 911. It's a, we meet once a month, and it's a county, and every, and all the police agencies in the county, and they're getting ready to roll out a new rapid SOS, and it's, I think, as mail, you know, it's going to really be something. It'll tell people, you know, if you're on an iPhone or an Android, they'll know exactly where you're at within eight to twelve feet, instead of an approximation, which is going to be good for schools and stuff like that. Some of the things that we looked at a couple of months ago, they could even tell us which way we were looking out the windows even, in some facilities. So, I mean, it was pretty good. I spent like, I think, eight years as mayor here for terms, and I'm council before, I've never seen in my life a council in chaos like this is. You guys need to work, this is a team! It's not a team, should be a team. All right, so you guys got to get your act together, all right? You need to take some classes on how to run a meeting, what do you do with minutes, things of that nature. I bet, I, you know, I'm not, I know, everybody's busy and everything, all right? Go online, search out Michigan Municipal League, see how you do a meeting. That outburst that came from that lady should never happen. No way, that should never, never have happened. Did I have that kind of problem? Yeah, I did, at one meeting, I hit that gavel so hard that I had to hit there, and we had a group that was opposed to the dons at that time. That was it, you're out of here. And they, I never had an issue after that, all right? So you guys, come on, you got to, you're a team here, you got to work like a team. You guys set policy, she directs all the employees, right there, that's the person. All right? You can't be nitpicking and stuff like that, right? Let's get her done.
Thanks, thanks, Mike.
Yes, Chris.
Yeah, Chris, before spring pines. The reason why I was interested in the City Council position is because, well, let's face it, can't get any worse right now, but, but, you know, I have some, we have some positive ideas, according to my letter, there were a couple of positive steps that, being at the meetings frequently, that the City Council's tough to get the city in a better financial position. But the thing is, that's going to slow it down or halt it is this trickery back and forth between city manager, city council, this councilperson against that councilperson. I mean, it's, it's got to stop. I mean, I realize that, yeah, there are things I don't know, because, you know, I'm not there, but I've been at enough meetings to know that there are things going on that, I mean, it was business, all this trickery, you know, business was pulled up just because of the fact that nobody's working together. You know, if this was, if this was a baseball team or a football team, I mean, there'd be no chance they could win, because you're just too busy fighting each other. You know? You, city manager and the council have to come together and say, hey, you know what I mean, he talks about gray areas, okay. Well, is it going to get to the point to where she's going to say, okay, do I order pencils from this store, or from this place, or that place? Because I ordered pencils from their own place, or the wrong colored pencil, she's going to get hurt in that. I mean, there's so many things she's doing right now, like I did the city last meeting, she's trying to keep a house of cards together, and one little wind comes up, everything splits all apart, and everything's being put on her shoulders. And if you want to chase another good person away, just keep doing what you're doing. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody, anybody?
Good evening, Terry Spencer, 2630, 2660, Fulton Drive, Bay City. I wanted to address a couple of things. I agree with Mr. Duranchek, it was very well put. There's, and I've been here since 2007, I was actually hired in when he was mayor. Things were a lot smoother back then, a lot smoother. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up really quick. The promotion process, I was promoted to acting chief back in 2010, and then sergeant, and the city manager at that time walked through the hallway, and he says, I'm going to make you acting chief, and the next day, he said, I'm going to make you sergeant. That's the same, that's the same policy with a lot of places. The chief before, there wasn't a test they took for Chief Tober. The chief before that worked here, and he was promoted to chief. The chief before him worked here, and he was promoted to chief. There are places that do tests, bigger cities that have a lot of people there, and I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but that is how the promotion process, and there is no policy on that, so I guess you can work on that. I want to make it very clear to this council, I'm not asking permission to join the fire department. That's a volunteer position, and the same thing is probably true with Matt Viviano. That's a volunteer permission. Now, you can say that if you don't want me to fight fires on hot duty, don't do that. That's fine. But I'm not asking permission to join the fire department. If you don't want me to save a life, or attempt to save a life, because there's a chance there could be a call, that's fine. But I'm still applying, so, no disrespect, but I just want you to understand that. I'm a veteran of the United States military, I have the right to volunteer in my community. I'm doing a lot of boards, I'm on several boards, DDA in City of Bay City, a couple of veterans' boards, police boards, different things, but, I digress. You made a very interesting comment there, Mrs. Corrigan, about how we shouldn't judge Mr. Gibson, but against the false accusations. The irony of that is, when your sister come in here and made a false accusation against me, we just dove right into that one.
What was the false accusation?
I'm, I'm up here, you'll have your time, Matt, thank you.
This is why I...
Thank you. No, no woman, never met her. Nothing against her, but I know she came in here last month and complained about me. I wonder how that happened. The same thing with also our township supervisor on Pin County, and her daughter, who made the same accusation that you just said to this board, we shouldn't, how could he harass somebody, it's a one mile area, I think is what she said. And that's what I was accused of. And she's a liar. They're both liars. And that's a fact, because I've served this position with honor and dignity since I've been here. And you can smirk all you want, but I haven't harassed anybody since I've been an officer, and I haven't harassed anybody before that, I didn't harass anybody in the military. So, none of the comments I wanted to make, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I just had one, one item that I kind of neglected, sorry. I have some real concerns too, about the financial condition and these fund allowances and stuff like that. So you got to make sure that, you know, the city manager's job, and of course, she's now the attorney, you share that information with council, so they know exactly financially where you're at. I don't think a lot of people in the city of Pin County know, I mean, we're in rough shape. I mean, you had a, you know, one of the best CPAs in Bay County come up here and tell you, hey folks, you've got maybe three years left here. I mean, that's not a whole lot. What if you have an emergency out there at the wastewater treatment facility? I mean, you guys know, you're going to blow half a million bucks, boom, just like this, then where are you going to be? So, if the finances are under control, you have to look at that budget, it's hard, I know. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any more public comment?
Yes, but mine is kind of a rebuttal, because I still have the messages you sent me from the Pin County Police Department page. You sent me messages telling me that I couldn't comment on that page because I was being disrespectful. My exact statement was, this is more than about Terry Spencer. This city's problems are more than about you. You deleted my comment, and then messaged me and told me I had to call you directly, or I wasn't allowed to comment on any of it. You go on that page, you delete everything over and over and over again if they don't agree with you. That's why I was here. I also brought, today I didn't, because I was just here to watch, but I also do have record of a lawsuit that was against you and another officer in this city. So don't tell people I'm a liar, because of nothing I said about you, and I was hoping you were here last week, I'm sorry about your accident, or whatever happened to you. I was hoping you were here, because I'm not going to walk into an office and discuss something, like a conversation that you and I had, one on one, because you're, you're just going to tell me what you want me to hear. That's what I'm not doing. I didn't lie about you, the, the lawsuit happened, Terry, bottom line, you know the lawsuit happened. The city settled it. It's not my fault the city doesn't know that, but when you sent me messages, you were bullying me, just like you did on the Citizens for United, Pin County United page. Because someone asked a question, I commented on it, I was deleted from the page, and then you're out there saying that because she's my sister is why I did that. No, that's not why I did that. I have family here, you said it was only for people that had stake in this community. I have a lot of family and a lot of friends here, and a lot of my family and a lot of my friends are afraid of you, and that's half of this town's problem. They don't want to upset Terry Spencer, because he has pull all over this town, all over Bay City. Bottom line. So you want to come up here and call me a liar, guess what? That's not the truth. Tell me I'm the only person you messaged that day on that Facebook post, because I know I'm not. They're just afraid to come here and say it. They're just afraid to come here and say it. That's it. Don't ever call me a liar. And you told me in that post that you didn't think I would discuss it. I'm not afraid.
Any more public comment?
You want to deny the messages you sent?
I'm having an argument with you.
Well, then don't get up there and call me a liar.
You are.
Before we adjourn, I have a question I'd like to ask. What is the proper procedure for swearing in the new mayor? Do we have to do that this evening?
No.
Do we have timeframe? Is, do we extend, do we have nine days left or?
You can come in tomorrow morning and I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I have a question.
You can ask, but we can't, we can't...
Okay, well, I already told you my name. Vern Little, 309. How did this go from a discussion to actually appointing is my question one. And then two is, did you guys vote him in just because of the fact there was no one else that was like running because no one knew? That sounds kind of crooked to me that you elect someone when no one knew that that was a possibility because there was nothing published. So then all of a sudden, Mr. Gibson is voted in the position. And then one other thing that I kind of noticed in this meeting that, Mr. Saha, you've found it, your name's on a lot of these different agenda items here, and when it come to all the financial portions of it that your name's attached to, you didn't have a comment for any of that. But when it come to the social media, boy, you couldn't say enough. So I just wondered what actually is more important to you, the social media or actually the finances? I guess everyone here knows that answer, but the...
I disagree. I disagree. Finances, finances, finances. Our city has to stay afloat to get out.
You want me to come in?
That's all I'm going to say is that it is ridiculous. All this talk is ridiculous.
Name, Andrew.
Like everybody named Deborah, 221 dot M13, Pin County, Michigan City of Pin County.
Thank you.
My husband is the councilperson. He has been trying for 32 years since he's been in business, joining this, the City Council, then it was the DDA, and now it's the Chamber of Commerce. And it could be the flower, the garden club, whatever it is. Whoever is up here is at least trying to do something. If you don't like what's going on here, please join, please help them. They're not enjoying this pressure, and I feel it right now. It's ridiculous. But you can blame, you can blame, but put your money where your mouth is and come and join. Somebody can be a councilperson, whatever. These people are under a lot of pressure. They all work, they do this, they do that, you know, and they have families. But put your money where your mouth is then. And you want to be hush-hushing and back and doing all this giggling? Well, put your money where your mouth is and join them and help. Because I just think he is in trouble, and it's not their fault. And my husband is a money man. That's what he's got a college degree in. And he cares about everything. He cares about finances. They all do. Everybody's doing the best they can up here. Come on and join them. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I'll make a motion to be there.
I'll support, so the motion to support being married, 805...